I'd like to call to order tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, September 12th. If we could all rise and pay respects to the flag.
I am in the name of the United States of America with the due Republic for religious demands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being of us.
Thank you. We could note the roll?
Noted.
This is the first time in a while we have everybody here.
That's good.
Moving on to number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda dated September 12th, 2024.
A second.
And I would like to ask if anybody talked into their microphone.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, any conflicts of interest, expertise contact? Does anybody have anything for tonight? Seeing none, move to number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 8:22, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes dated 8:22, 2024.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on tonight's If anybody has anything they would like to discuss that's not on the agenda tonight, please come up to the podium, state your name. Just give a little context, there's three minutes.
Okay, thanks. My name's Adam Smart. I live on Tanview over here. I appreciate everyone here spending their time to do this. I just had a concern related to the development happening up the road that we talked about the last meeting. Development's great, I'm all about it, I understand it's going to happen, but Tanview, as everybody knows, it was not for the cut through, which I understand that, I live on it, but I'm wondering if as a planning commission, we could potentially plan around the idea of Tanview not being like a main thoroughfare, because even when you Google, like if you were to put a pinpoint where this neighborhood's going to be, where all these new homes are going to be, and you're going to say, I want to drive to Kroger, you know, a lot of times of the day it would take you through Tanview, not downtown, not anywhere other way. So I'm wondering if we could do something like put up not a through-street or some sort of deterrent beyond just like saying, hey, we'll bring the police over there, because it's just not built for that kind of traffic. There's no sidewalks, there's a, you know, I mean, I'm sure everyone knows the street, but I'm just sort of asking for that to be considered, especially as more and more homes go in north of here and people are trying to get south. It's understandable, I'm not trying to say it's like going to be turned off, but if it could just be, if it could be thought about and notice that it is a direct route and without other plans to deter traffic, it's going to be pretty bad without sidewalks and stop signs and all the rest. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to address anything that's not on public hearing or on tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
Just because I just listened to the previous comment at the podium, a lot of people may not know it, but by 2026, Dunlap Road is going to be paved from where it's currently paved now by the township entrance and where it approaches Wesley, and then it's going to go all the way to M24. And I think that pavement of that road is going to help deter a lot of that traffic coming in the direction that you just spoke of, because it's going to give them a direct route to M24 and the other way. So without going through the village, I won't tell you that they're not going to go southbound, but that should help, I believe, in what's going to happen with the developments going up north of Seymour Lake Road.
All right, moving on to number eight, Commissioners' comments. Does anybody have, if they would like to add? All right, seeing none. Number nine, public hearing, which we don't have anything on the agenda for tonight. So let's move to number 10, unfinished business, the master plan update. You're up.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mateo Pasalakwa, Carlisle Wartman Associates. We are the planning consultant for the township. So for tonight, for the master plan work, as we chug along, we've got two items on the agenda for this evening, one being a conversation about a property owned by Parks and Rec and the other being Oxford Hills Golf Course. So with that, we'll kind of get started. So as it relates to the Parks and Rec property on Coates, the conversation was that the Parks and Rec Department engaged us about wanting to put a little bit of input onto the master plan as it relates to a portion of the park, the Seymour Lake Park on Coates Road. Some of the planning commissioners probably recall at a point in time that the Parks and Rec Department wanted to take the single-family home that is on the property and get it rezoned and parcel off and sell it, and that request was denied. So what they would like to do is in an attempt to kind of come to a better solution for that project, they've asked that a portion of that site be rezoned to the five-acre standard and the, or not rezoned, redesignated in the future land use map as a five-acre site, which would then put them in a position to put a plan together and approach the board at a later date for a potential rezoning. The purpose of that is to have that single-family home come off of the park property, be its own property, and function as a single-family house. My memo that I typed up on it upon reading it further and getting some feedback, probably could have been clear that the point of this was not to designate it as a five-acre site and then split it up further, the hope at some point is to designate it as a single five-acre lot. And so Parks and Rec wanted to put in front of the planning commission this request to have that portion of that park redesignated as acreage estates, which is the five-acre So with that, I would throw, you know, answer any questions, we can have a conversation regarding that item.
I think then what earlier conversation I had with someone was that this is just for this parcel to be rezoned into a five-acre piece now.
Tech, so actually it would be a portion of-
That's all we're going to be looking at for this component tonight.
Correct. All you're doing is looking at turning a five-acre portion of that lot to acreage estates as opposed to the public recreation designation.
Okay. Clear now.
Just for the future land use.
Correct.
It's not, we're not actually changing the zone until it is put in the master plan in the future.
Designation. Yes, correct. So the map, and just to clarify, the future land use draft map that you have in front of you this evening is labeled version four. Every time we change it, it up, the version changes, and then we mark it with the red, the red designation to show where we've changed. The only change that's been made is that proposed change by the Parks and Rec Department.
And again, it's not a change, this is a-
You're not rezoning the property. You are just applying, just to be clear though, you're applying a designation to a portion of the property. It is still one site, it's just that area of it would carry the five-acre designation on it.
Mr. Chair?
Sir? It makes more sense to me, I mean, we have other areas out there that are designated as large acre sites now. To designate it a future land use site as larger than, say, an R1 type or something, it makes sense, in my opinion.
So is the, I'm assuming then the planning commission's okay with this request to keep this-
I would be okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I got a little bit in-depth with this today, and the conclusion I have is that it's good for the park to do this, the future opportunities to get out of the rental property home ownership.
Throw a hand, if you can, throw a vote, how do we do that?
I don't need vote, I just need direction, saying that it's, you're comfortable with it. Okay.
Okay.
Let me, my apologies, I should have been scrolling while I was presenting. So then with, with that, the next portion of the, tonight's conversation regards the Oxford Hills Golf Course. So as the planning commissioner knows, we've been working on the future land use map for what now seems like forever, but we're getting there. And part of that exercise has been working with some of the larger landowners and/or sites that are, that could be developed in the near future as opposed to later down the road. And so much like we did with the American Aggregate Levy sites, we met with the owners and the representation of Oxford Hills in August, we took their notes on kind of what their desires are for the site from a future development standpoint, we worked with them to kind of develop the, the map that was put in the memo that is in front of you this evening, and I will get to it. And so, and just to know that this was a, you know, much like with the other sites, this was a back and forth, we, we got to a point where this visual representation and these designations were comfortable in putting forward. Again, these are not exact, there's nothing about this that's exact, there's nothing about this that's concrete, but it does give a picture of what the ownership's goals for development on the site would look like. They are looking to sell in the next six to 18 months, and kind of the overall goal that's been discussed is they have 400 to 420 units on the site. The site in your current master plan is zoned private recreation with a two-and-a-half-acre lot alternate, and in the current draft of your future land use map, it is the two-and-a-half acre lot designation. So again, as we did before, we had Jim Sharp take a look at this, kind of assess it from an infrastructure standpoint, and so that information was also included in the packet tonight as it relates to net acreage, just so that, and again, so the net acreage that was provided is, net acreage is development dependent, with the exception of wetlands, which we can figure out. It really depends on what kind of project is coming forward that helps determine that acreage. So that number has a plus or minus to it, but it's not, it's not by any great degree, it's just site-specific. And I would take the time to publicly thank Jim Sharp for taking the time to put this together, because it is very helpful for us. And so he assessed the net acreage, water supply, and sanitary supply for the site. And so with that, and I can kind of scroll through these things as you need them, but I will, I will leave it on the memo map for now. So with that, we're just kind of looking to gauge the responses of the planning commission and kind of understand what the next best step is for this site as it relates to the future land use map and the designations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Should we give the landowner three minutes?
Yeah, you move along, yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen and the commission. Ken Gross, I've been before you before, I represent Oxford Hills. Kathy Hubbard, the primary owner, she's out of town, so she couldn't be here. With me tonight is also a gentleman from Schaefer Development. We're still in the process of negotiating with several different developers, but we've been kind of teaming up with Schaefer for a extended period of time, and they've put, among the various developers we're talking about trying to put together a deal, they've by far and away investigated the property more thoroughly than anyone else, and I think they're probably most familiar with the issues of infrastructure relative to sanitary, to water, to traffic flow, and they communicated, I believe, with Mr. Sharp today to update on those issues. So with respect to specific questions, I would kind of invite them up and defer to them in response to any questions, but I kind of wanted to share with you one observation in that, because I've attended several meetings over the past three months, and I think I have a sense of what some of the community goals are and the commission's goals when it comes to looking at the development, and how the reaction is to other projects. And the thing that I'd like to emphasize is that the goal of Ms. Hubbard and the owners of the property that have been with the community for many, many years, and have operated the golf course and are inherently part of the community, is that whatever development occurs, the goal is to make it an absolutely beautiful, aesthetically pleasing development so that it's a, it's something that the entire community is proud of. And with the golf course and the size of the property, it provides that opportunity. When you drive around through the community, there are other small communities that have been put together and developments, and there's, there's some beautiful housing that's been constructed, and there is the goal where planned communities are trying to be put together. This one is probably the opportunity to make the nicest one, because it's got a big lake in the middle, it's positioned just south of the village, and it really could be something special. To do that, density is important, because density allows the developer to invest the money needed for the amenities that really take the community up from being nice houses to being a nice community with nice, with nice roads and with park areas and with signs and with, you know, everything that makes something aesthetically pleasing. So the one thing that I want to say is that it's too early now to know what the final product's going to look like until you're presented with something that says, this is the area of the number of multifamily homes that we want, but here's how the roads are going to lay out within it, and here's where the 9,000 to 12,000 units would be surrounding the lake, and here's the whole picture. And if the whole picture, the whole picture has to satisfy you in order for the PUD to get approved and for the project to go forward. The one thing that I would hope that you don't do or that you resist is if you pigeonhole a property and say, ah, we don't want anything, we want all 25,000 lots, we want all one-acre lots. If you do that, the ability to present a plan that has the aesthetics is greatly compromised. You can have, you can have a bunch of beautiful, big homes around that development, but you won't be able to have the amenities and the infrastructure that's put in from a planned development with all, which is what makes it look special. We've all, we all drive around and see, you know, five beautiful homes, but when we, what opens our eyes up and says, wow, this is really nice, is when we're driving through the metro Detroit area and every once in a while we find a community that's really put together and really well organized and has all those things in it. So when you're making your decisions, I would, I would ask you to take into consideration the idea of not foreclosing anything or making it difficult to present a proposal that shows you density of 400 or 380 or 420 units. Everyone on the development side and the owners understand that there has to be adequate water, there has to be adequate sewer, there has to be adequate access into Drainer Road, into Lapeer Road, so that the issues of traffic flow are not compromised, so that it's not, so that it's either status quo or it's better, it can't get worse. Nobody's, you know, I don't, I can, I can feel safely that whoever comes to you at the point where there's a, a site plan seeking approval and a development, they're going to have answers to all those questions, and they're going to position it in a way where it addresses those issues in a satisfactory manner, because if it doesn't, A, it wouldn't be the development that Kathy Hubbard wants to see happen, and B, it wouldn't satisfy them, and we understand that, and we think that that's the correct outcome. It should, it has to address those issues, it has to be something that the community's going to endorse and is going to like and is going to appreciate. But the only thing that I worry about, because, you know, I've listened, I listen, I'm a pretty good listener, and I see how the reaction is to some of the other plans, and it's like, if you foreclose the opportunity to satisfy you in the future, I think that would be, that's what I would hope you would consider not doing. So with respect to anything on sanitary, I'm going to, I'm going to give my, my colleagues from Schaefer an opportunity, I know I'm way over the three minutes, but if you, if you're willing to give them an opportunity to say a few words, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we can give them three minutes.
Thanks, appreciate it. Not like my three, three rows.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, planning commissioners. My name's Spencer Schaefer, and I'm with Schaefer Development. I think Ken did a fairly eloquent job of explaining, you know, what is the intention from a development perspective on this property. What we envision here is a premier mixed generational development, where you can have a housing development that features homes for an entry-level buyer, that features homes for a family, you know, who just had their first kid, second kid looking for move-up housing, that features homes with ranches and potentially some condos and other attached product that we've heard from prior meetings that planning commission likes, that sort of models off what you see in Gracel and the successes that have been seen in Gracel. So we don't really want to reinvent the wheel, we want to see what works here in Oxford Township and bring it here to this golf course property. It's a unique parcel, it's very large in nature, it's got the amenity there associated with the lake, you know, we've, we've heard there's desires for walking trails, for other amenities, we feel like there's a premier opportunity to locate an amenity center, a clubhouse situated on the lake, but as Ken mentioned, we can only do these amenities when we have critical mass, when we have that density, when we have those rooftops, because those amenities aren't going to be successful without the foot traffic there. So, you know, a lot of these details I don't want to get into now, because those are going to be associated with the future plan submit, but what I do want to talk about is what we have next door a little bit. To the north, I don't know how far it is, I read about it in Mr. Sharp's review letter, but there is a next phase of Tullamore, it's the villages and the peninsula of Tullamore, I believe it's called. That property right now is zoned R1A, which by right permits 6,000 square foot lots. It's master plan Village Residential, which is 9,000 to 12,000 square foot lots, but it's zoned 6,000 square foot lots. We look at Tullamore, that was developed with 12,000 square foot lots. As we go more towards the east, Camp Oakland still owns one parcel, that's Parks and Recreation. Another parcel was recently sold, I believe, to Clearview Homes, that's being planned for a housing development. But as we go even further south, more in that southeast corner of the property, there are one-acre lots here. So we wanted to be sensitive to that, and as part of a planned unit development proposal, I think everybody sort of expects, you know, there may not necessarily be one-acre lots there, but the intention would be to have a bigger buffer, to put some of our larger, more high-end or premium housing, have it being located in that location. And as we look on the south, and this was where we had a little bit, you know, debate internally, but we have a PUD directly south of us that features very small, single-family lots and a condo environment, as well as some townhouses. And as we go on the other side of Lapeer, there's varying degrees of single-family, commercial, multifamily, as well as a mobile home park. So we understand, you know, what surrounds us, and, you know, we were trying to come up with something that we felt would get us, would get the Hubbard's, the density, you know, that they required for us to be able to justify a deal, but also propose a product that the community needs. You know, a lot of communities that we operate in, predominantly West Wiltonville, Farmington Hills, Comers, you know, a lot of these original communities that developed after, you know, we saw the migration out of metro, out of Detroit proper, only developed large, single-family lots, and they're having a problem nowadays, having housing that's affordable for young people, having old people who are staying in their homes, they're not moving out, the school systems, you know, are having issues because they don't have enough school-age children. So what we're looking to do here is, is striking a chord, you know, we know the balance of housing that exists in the Oxford Township community, and we want to do something a little bit different that can be open to all. Again, the key here is doing a mixed, multi-generational development, combination of products, you know, having enough critical mass that can support all these desirable amenities that we've heard that everybody, you know, so wants and desires in the Oxford Township community. So it's about finding the right balance at the end of the day. And with the future site plans, you know, that's, that's where, you know, we'll address those items and discuss those items and debate those items, but as Ken stated, this is about establishing a vision now for the future, giving us an option that allows us to do the type of development that we're seeking and, you know, for it to be amenity-rich. So with that, I want to thank you for your time, I do appreciate it, and we're more than happy to answer any questions as it relates to utilities, but we're going to do our due diligence, and we know what has to be done, and, you know, we've had some conversations with Mr. Sharp, I'm sure he's going to go into some of those elements a little bit as it relates to the sewer and the water, but we do believe there is a path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Forward is all yours again.
Yeah, so based on the information that we presented, the owner's representation, and I'm happy to kind of talk through this with you guys.
Mr. Chair, point of view, can we have Mr. Sharp come up and give an analysis of his research for us in three minutes?
Did you, the question first?
We can do that.
Okay.
How couldn't you read it in three minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Three minutes?
They both took five, we'll give you three and a half.
I didn't read it in three minutes, so I think you need a little longer.
Yeah, so as, you know, obviously with the larger developments, Mateo's kind of gotten us involved with the master planning of it, just to kind of look at what the infrastructure's going to be able to, to support. So, pretty straightforward, I don't know if you read it or not, but obviously it's in your packet there. We broke it down into three areas, we got the land area, we've got the sanitary sewer, and we have the water systems that are in there. In terms of the land area, I just thought it was important, you know, again, no formal plans or anything have been brought forward, this is all just, you know, kind of you guys looking at it, but based on what Mateo had said, the 400 to 420 units in there, you can see that overall the parcel is about 200 acres, we'll just say, you know, you take out the lakes, you take out some wetlands, you take out some rite of raised and things, in our approximation, they're going to end up at probably like around 100 acres or so to actually develop, somewhere in that ballpark. So just to give you a feel for, you know, what some densities or something may, may be looking at there. Again, with regards to, jumped into, the next one was the water supply. So right now, this property is not currently in the water and sewer district. The township has discussed it over the years to have an additional well site over on the eastern portion of the township, somewhere in the Drainer Road corridor area that's kind of what our models show. Right now, the water system is fine to support the people that are, that are in the existing water district. However, to add, you know, significant amount, I don't believe that we have the water capacity to do that, based on the models that we've run. So, again, the township has been investigating this, over on the Camp Oakland, that's Crossroads site, we ran into an issue, we were going to start doing some, some drill testing over there to see what kind of an aquifer, how much water we could draw out, and it was discovered that there was an underground storage tank on the crossroads property. They are working through that process, I got here on this crossroad at Camp Oakland, so forgive me, it's the same piece of property in my mind, but they have been working with Eagle on that for a couple of years to get that site cleaned up. A report was recently submitted to Eagle back in August. They have up to six months, Eagle does, to review the report, do an audit, do all those types of things. Again, I don't know if they're going to, you know, they could request additional, additional information, so on and so forth. So until that gets cleaned up, we have not been proceeding with any additional work on a well site in that, on that property there. So, just to give you the background on, on all that water. So right now, there, this property is not in the water district, nor could we provide water to it should they come to the Water and Sewer Committee that asks to be placed in the water district. We would not have ample water supply to do 400 homes. If one, one home was going in, we could, okay, we could do one home, but they're not coming here for one home, so. So that's kind of where it's at, is that kind of, everybody understand what's going on with the water, Mr. Bold, as the chairman?
Not to guide your discussion, but you've mentioned something about the sewer as well.
Yeah, so that, that was the water, and does everybody kind of-
Fair question.
Any more questions on the water?
I guess my question would be if, if there was a way to put in a well to provide additional water, would that be on their own properties here?
That could be an option if the, if they wanted to move more, you know, quicker than what Eagle was doing with Crossroads, we have to be within 2,000 feet of this underground storage tank, so, because we're doing a type one public work.
That's quite a distance.
But if the, if the landowner, you know, or developer of that property, if they said, hey, we got five acre- But if the, if the landowner, you know, or developer of that property, if they said, hey, we got five acres over here, it's going to be something very similar to what it's behind us here at the water treatment plant. So, we're going to need a few acres to drill wells, put up a facility and something like that. That could be an option as well.
So, there's an option?
There is, yeah. We're not, we're not stuck to that particular location. We could go, we could go through all this and then drill test wells on that, at that, our desired location. And the aquifer might say, no, you can only get 200 gallons of water out of here a minute. And we're going to be, oh, crass, you know. I don't know if you know the history, just a brief history, this building was supposed to be on that site where the, where the water treatment plant is. They were supposed to be flip flopped, but apparently, this is before my tenure, they drilled some wells here and they, they couldn't get the capacity that they were looking for. So, they went closer to the lake and they got them. So, what I'm trying to say is just because we want to put a well site on a particular location, doesn't mean we're necessarily going to get it.
Okay, I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Oh, and that was kind of my, my question was, what if Eagle comes back with a bad report? You've been working on this two years, you know, hypothetically, they come back and say, no, you can't put a site here. What is plan B?
Plan B is look for another location.
Yeah.
It's basically planned.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Then go ahead.
We have, we have authorization from, you know, we've been working with Crossroads. They've given us approval to go on the site and so forth. So, that's kind of why I've been targeting that property.
Mr. Chair, quickly.
Sir.
Is there a number in your calculations that could satisfy a number of lots? You said 400 couldn't support that. Is there a, a number of dwellings that you think, based on your calculations, could be supported? If it were to be entered into the water district, I'm saying that.
As is right now, or you mean, are you looking for?
As it is right now, with no additional wells.
No additional wells?
Is this just a matter of any capacity? Have you taken anything additional?
We haven't run that number, but it would be very, it would be pretty low. It would be pretty low. We're not upwards of, you know, 100, 200 homes. I mean, the other properties that are developing around it are in the water district. And so, we have to make sure that we keep that capacity set aside so that if they do want to develop those properties, as we were talking about the Tullamore North property, you know, that may not happen next year, it might be two years, but we still have to reserve that capacity for them. So, it would be a very low number.
Okay. Thank you.
Water, good?
We're good.
Okay. Sanitary sewer, a little bit different. There is a, there is a sanitary sewer force main that is on Drainer Road. Unfortunately, this property does not have access to that. I guess I should start by saying this property, again, is not in the sewer district at this time. Okay? There is a six inch force main. There is a pumped main that comes from the Camp Oakland site. So, it's six inches in diameter. We are currently upgrading the Camp Oakland pump station to accept more sewage from properties to the north. And that's the reason for that improvement. So, this particular property will not have access to that sanitary force main. However, there is a existing sanitary sewer line on the west side of M24 that all of our sewage dumps into. There's this 27 inch line that's over there. It's actually, I think the line is right about up there, southerly property line, kind of where it abuts the, the Hills of Oxford development, right across the street from there. So, likely this property is going to need some sort of a pump station anyway. It sits well below everything else. So, I believe that it's going to be a pump station, similar, you know, we have lots of them in Waterstones and so forth. And they would be collected into a pump station and it could likely be pumped across the street, you know, underneath M24, you know, permits and all that kind of fun stuff going on. But that would likely, that, that would be, that would be an acceptable solution, I believe. So, yeah, we haven't seen any development plans, so we can't give you the specifics of it. But there is sewer capacity available in the township and across the street where you have 27 inch line. That would be, that would be the most likely location. Rest of it's kind of just laid out in there. I mean, hopefully I just reiterated what's in my, what's in the memo there. Are there any questions on the sanitary sewer?
I just had one quick one. You're talking about the sanitary sewer line that runs right in front of Graystone and keeps going southbound towards Orient?
Yeah, it actually comes.
I've seen it. I've seen it actually flow.
27 inch line, it's, it comes down Drainer Road, it goes through the Red Barn subdivision. It comes out through the Mobile Home Park.
Right.
And then it's M24 and goes due south and it connects into the Orient system. That's where.
Right by that Graystone. Yeah, and there, there's capacity within that line right now to take out, maybe, residents, maybe?
Yes.
Three to 400 more?
Yes.
Okay. So, they'd have to bore under 24, I think.
They would have to bore under 24.
Okay.
But that is, that is possible, obviously.
I'm just asking the question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. And then, any questions on the sewer? Any questions on that?
I think you just answered it.
Okay. And then just, again, food for thought, because you're looking for master planning, you know, it's been mentioned about the traffic, things of that nature. Obviously, they just re-signalized the intersection at Drainer Road and M24. I don't know if that's because of capacity issues or accidents or what's been going on, but we all know that that's, you know, the corner's kind of busy, we'll say. Currently, this property only has access to Drainer Road. There, it's kind of landlocked out to M24. It would be nice if there could be an access to M24, but currently get on that property, we would have to talk to the property owners along there and maybe work out some kind of a deal or something, access. But it's, the only access currently to this property is off of Drainer Road.
So, I got, that draws a question for me. When I looked at it, I mean, you have the lake to the north, you have the pond to the south, then there's a fairway that runs down through there. It's kind of running east and west. And when I looked at where that fairway lines up with 24, if you were to take it vertically west, I guess, it would seem to me there could be another ingress and egress component on 24. Because their property goes to 24?
Does not.
Oh, it does not? Because where? Oh, the old railroad bed?
The old railroad bed is owned by a different entity. And.
That's why I'm confused.
Yes. So, it appears as though it goes to M24, but it does not. However, the entity that owns it may, there may be consideration.
Okay, you just brought light on the subject. All right, thank you.
What's the grade difference between 24 and that?
It's significant.
It's significant, but I, if they don't have a way to get to 24, that's the problem. I didn't, I thought the property connected to 24 at that point, but you're saying the old railroad bed.
The old railroad bed, yeah, is owned by a different entity.
Well, different entity.
And so, they don't have direct access, but that would be nice. I mean, in the whole scheme of things, to have access right to M24. And that would alleviate much of the problems there on Drainer Road, but currently it does not exist that way.
You'd almost need a two lane roundabout or a drainer to fix all that.
It was discussed there when they redid M24. M24 was having nothing to do with any roundabouts, though, I'll tell you that. So, we did not want that. And obviously, with a couple of other developments in the currently planning phase, it's only going to get, you know, it's just going to get worse unfortunately. I wish I knew the answer to that. We got some money, we could buy a gas station on the corner maybe or something and help it, but. So, with that, I'm just kind of looking at the infrastructure there. I mean, obviously, stormwater for a development like this shouldn't be much of an issue. There's wetlands and ponds and, you know, things. We have our normal, you know, filtering of, you know, stormwater before it gets into any of the, any of the wetlands. But with all the wetlands that are on the property and, and the, and the pond there, it's not going to be an issue with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Question for Mr. Sharp. Knowing these issues that you've brought up, water and sewer, how long do you think it would take to resolve and have these issues resolved so that some kind of development could be done on this property? Is it going to take a year to work through the water and sewer issues? Nine months? Two years? Do you have an estimate?
I would say that the water issue would probably take approximately three years. Just guessing. You know, because we have to, everything has to be approved when you're withdrawing the amount of water that we want to. It's not, we just don't go to the health department and go pull the permit. We have to do a lot of studies. It starts with some test drilling. We have to go through the Eagle process through landscaping. That process is probably going to take at least a year. And assuming that the aquifer has the ability to draw the water out that we would like, you know, then we have to put design plans together. Then you have to build the plant. So, you know, you're probably, at least I would say, three years out before the water issue would be resolved, just knowing the way that the process works. Sanitary sewer, not as much, I don't think, other than, again, they don't have direct access. So, they would have, and development would have to negotiate with property owners and permits from M24. But sewer capacity could be available there, so I don't think that that would take nearly as long. But just, just a rough guess, that's about what I would think. Yeah.
But it's not something that's going to be done in the next six months?
No, definitely not. And obviously, this is all predicated, you know, on the township's, you know, desire to move forward.
Right.
You know, with such a, you know, they may say, you know, we're estimating that it's going to be several million dollars, probably $4 million to build something. Could be higher than that, depending on pricing at the time. So, depending on what the water fund has in its coffers at the time, you know, the Water and Sewer Committee will look at it first and make recommendations to the township board at that point, whether they want to continue or whether they just want to leave it as is. And at that point, you know, the system could mix. Still a lottery.
Jim, has the township currently or in the, in the past, because I'm not knowledgeable, done any experimental areas in the township where we might be able to pull water from in other areas?
No, we have not.
So, right now, we don't have any other current areas that we even know what aquifers are throughout the township? We're just talking specifically right now for this parcel.
We're just looking at.
In the area of this parcel for the water district?
Correct.
Okay. Because they're not part of the water district. They're not part of the sewer district.
But no, we have not.
They never intended to be because they were recreational property.
Correct.
That's how I look at it.
Correct.
Okay.
We have not looked at other areas of the township, done any drilling. The only thing that we've looked at are some well logs to maybe see how deep.
Oh, for product?
You know, but you can go on the Eagle website and you can kind of see how, how deep the, the aquifer is, that type of thing. But, you know, we really haven't investigated or done any test drilling at other locations at this.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I think it's three minutes.
Three.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You did a good job, thank you.
I'll be over here if you need more. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, is that for me?
This is for you.
Okay.
You go back up to the man.
Yeah, sure. The one that we, the one that was part of the memo?
Yep.
This guy?
So, my, my first question is, what is the ask for today?
So, and I was about to clarify before you come in this question. So, tonight, you've got a lot of information in front of you and the question is, you know, currently in the future land use draft map for your 2024 plan, this is designated as a two and a half acre designation. Which.
That's what I thought. So, are you asking to put that map in the future land use map?
No, no, no. What I'm, well, what I'm asking is, should the future land use designation for the site change?
If, if my question continues. If we're going to, because I know based on some of the previous conversations, some of the comments made, that there have been discussions about having, I'm going to call, not the right term, mixtures of multiple different zoning on that site itself. And, and my, I don't necessarily agree with this map, right? But I understand there's going to be differences on this. You're going to have a little bit of everything. So, my question is, from a future land use standpoint, how can you depict that without doing something like this? Because this is going to take a lot more conversation, a lot more discussions. From my opinion, right, this is probably one of the most important developments we'll ever talk about as the planning commission. Because if you come up north on 24 and look to the right, that's the first thing you see, right? Like right now, you see a beautiful golf course. So, how is that going to look when you develop it? That's going to be important. And we all need to keep that in mind versus just throwing a bunch of things on a map here saying, yeah, we're going to put this house here, these houses here, this, there. It's, it's going to be a lot more detail. So, I don't necessarily want to get that detail in the future land use map.
Correct.
Because there's a lot more discussion ahead of that. I want to be as vague as possible, but allow the flexibility within that site that it needs to be without putting the township in jeopardy.
Yeah. So, the answer to that question is, is that the site would be designated as a sub-area plan. And at that point, there would be a conversation about, okay, we are open to a development picture on this site, but here are the things that as the township, we want out of this development, right? We want roads, we want some sort of, you know, reasonable traffic management system. We want, you know, infrastructure has to be improved, kind of open ended on who pays for that. We want open space. We want this amenity, we want that amenity. It's, it's similar to where the conversation went at the levee sites for exactly that purpose of, you can't do this to a future land use map, but you can apply, if you look at the, if you look at the version four future land use map that was included, because I believe you were absent for that meeting, this hatching.
Yep.
Is a sub-area designation.
Okay.
And so, then within that.
We could do the same thing.
You get a little bit more of a, of a, a better picture of what goes there, but it's still not concrete. It's still not, you know, lines drawn and sanders to this here, that there. So, that would be, to answer your question of how do we do that, we do it through a sub-area plan.
Okay, thank you. And from my personal perspective, I'd be open to that. I'm not, like I said, I'm not in full agreement of what they're showing today. And I think it's most likely what, what I want, but I understand there's going to be different things in there. Some of the comments made earlier, yes, we do need some additional, different types of housing in this township. Because I remember what the numbers, the average housing rate, this township right now is about $450,000, right? It doesn't allow for new families and things to move in. And it's not just an Oxford issue, it's actually a whole kind of issue. Southeast Michigan issue, right? A lot more discussion needs to happen on how to resolve that problem. And then we did make some comments about multi-family being in that area similar to what we have in Waterstones right now with the condos, et cetera, because they go for sale, et cetera, for, you don't buy it the first day, you're missing out. Stuff like that. So, we need more of those, mostly for our aging population. But something that would help with this development. But I don't want to lock us either one to, in one area. For me, around the lake, many other things could happen. But I just, and so that's why I'm open for what you should do.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer to your question.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman? The coming new master plan that we are working on, the timeframe from when that plan starts till it ends, it's how long? Is that a five year plan? Ten year plan?
Your current, like, once you adopt your, the current master plan, kind of what's the, the shelf life of it?
Yes.
So, by law, every five years, you got to dust it off and say, still looks good, needs a tweak, let's tear it up. So, every five years, statutorily, you are supposed to review it and make that decision.
So, therefore, based on Jim's estimate of time to get some of the background stuff in place, there might be one year left in this master plan to actually do a development.
I mean, yes and no, but, but I, if I understand to some extent what you're trying to gauge, if, if an application, you know what I mean, if it to the point where you are starting to look at actual development plans for the site, the current future land use map is, is the one that's going to be kind of referenced throughout that process.
I'm wondering if there's any reason to change the zoning of that property from what it is today in the master plan? Because nothing can be done to develop it in the life of the, this master plan.
Well, it can be developed. It's just not necess, it, it's just how it's developed is, is, it's kind of a moving target. I understand what you're asking. I just don't want to say that it's, that making this decision in five years is feasible given kind of the way things are moving in the township. If you have a question for him, I'm the Iger.
Well, he's talking three, maybe four years. To get the underground things in place. And that this plan is only good for five years, you've got a year or less to. You've got a year or less to really develop it. But so I'm wondering why we need to do anything with it in the master plan?
Maybe I can help answer this. We're, we're only looking at the future land use map, right? The current zoning of that site is not changing at this point.
Correct.
Not part of the master plan. So we can put really anything in the future land use plan we want to, and just reevaluate the factors. We're interested to do what we talked about, and then three years from now, it could really change.
Yeah.
You know, time, or the developers want to go a completely different direction. But this allows, in my opinion, a developer or anybody looking at that property to consider something different. It's more of allow them to plan. If you wait three, five years to do it because the township can't get water there, the developer's not going to wait that long to put a plan again. And they're going to have to do engineering work, all this other work, et cetera, et cetera, which is going to probably take them a year plus to get there. So you need to back it up in there. So to me, the issues that the township has, is, I could call it irrelevant, but it's relevant to a point. But from a developer's perspective, they're going to have to take into account whatever they develop anyway. And if they can't get the water there in three years, that may change their entire plan. Or they go to wells. Right? But to me, it's, it's, it's relevant, but it's not truly relevant to what we put on this map, in my opinion.
Sure.
Just bear with me, uh, planning commission. I'm not speaking in reaction to the plans that have been presented to do with the property. I'm reacting to the change from recreation slash 2.5 acres to a more critical mass slash more density. Now, the township is working on their master plan. Township has had open houses, March 10th, 2024. From the open house, station number one that was up at the open house, responses were limit development, low density. Enforce larger lots to keep density lower to avoid cluster developments. Strictly preservation of ma, of nature. Recreation, community centers, sports fields, pickleball domes, more parks, playgrounds, and bike accessories. Those are some of the highlights from the open house. Then we were fortunate enough to put out a master plan survey on March 4th, 2024. They had some questions in there. In questions two and three, the respondents were asked what they most liked about Oxford. The top three were lakes, rivers, natural areas, families or friends, parks, and recreation. It goes further to talk about top items selected to be changed by all participants. More recreation opportunities, more shopping, increased preservation and safety. They also talked about improved road infrastructure, pacified truck routes, more natural landscaping, preservation, hospital, bike paths. Then this week, in our Oxford leader, was a full article about our survey with a recap that talked about the very same things, but they used some statistics in regards to how many people answered it, how many people, uh, uh, of the survey respondents who identified as Oxford township residents, 22% had lived in the township for more than 25 years. And those are the folks that were answering these questions. So what I look at on this is the same thing that we did with some of the other property of the north on this mast, on this map, that talked about the Dunlap Road subarea, the Ray Road subarea, where we, where we asked some of those areas to remain the same as it is in the current master plan, without doing any changes within this ma, new master plan, but looking at it in five years. And the reason that I'm suggesting this is that we have no designation for infrastructure, water, or sewer. We have traffic infrastructure issues, and we have destiny issues in the master plan. And the biggest one is the density issues that if the general public had talked to us all about, I have not heard one person, I'm not being smart, oh, let's go build more high-density homes in Oxford Township. So I'm not in favor of changing this position on this property, have it remain as recreation slash 2.5 acres as it is today.
So to, just to be clear, as it, as it is on the 19 map, it is the recreation with the two and a half alternative. On your draft, the current version draft, is just the two and a half lot. It no longer retains the, the base recreation.
From the information I gathered, I'm, I'm not willing to take out the recreation because visual aids talk, statistics talk. They want, the, the community wants recreation. And far be it for me to sit here, and my time is limited, I understand that, far be it for me to sit here and say that I want to take away from recreation.
I would entertain the sentiments of the other commissioners, because after, like I said, we're, you know, this process is coming to a close, as it relates to the map. And we are, we are putting the final touches on the master plan draft itself to put in front of the commission.
Mr. Chair. Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll-
I guess, I guess I have a question. Kind, it's more for the planning commission members, in a sense. You know, John spoke well in what he presented, with the information that he had in front of him. And he's done his homework. And I was involved in the beginning stages, and then kind of fell off with some health issues. But anyway, um, he, he said the rural residential at two and a half. I've never been one to say that I wouldn't go down to one acre parcels, which could be subrural residential. With 206 approximate acres on the property and about 108 approximate acres, just say 50%, probably developable land by the time you put in roads and networking and all the stuff it takes to develop properties, you know, lakefront property there. I could go between one acre and two and a half acres for a, a future land use map. But I, I wouldn't go with more density than that, in my own opinion, anyway. So just to let the other planning commission members where I stand.
Anybody else? I, I kind of agree. And one of the, one of the points that was brought up with the, with the developers is, communities like this that have been building successful in, you know, southeast Detroit area, and in some of those areas, they've worked. But this isn't southeast Detroit area, this isn't that area. Like Mr. Spiz says, this is the first thing people are going to see when they pull into Oxford. So do you want to see a bunch of multifamily? Do you want to see? I, I'd rather see us stay recreational. I would be okay with the two and a half, maybe even one acre, like Mr. Berger said. I don't know that I would be in favor of going any lower than that.
You had a question?
Well, I was just going to comment that I'm in favor of leaving it at the two and a half acre site recreational as it is today. Because I think that's what the public, as John has pointed out, has said that they want more recreation.
I, so, that's an interesting part of the conversation, is the recreation designation. And the only reason I put it in front of you is because it, there are conversations about the feasibility and the, and the operations of golf courses, of which I'm not going to go into because I don't run one. But, yeah, the direction, the direction of the, of the two and a half acres was, as an alternate in 19, was some, some acknowledgement that there may be a change in the way that this property would be used and the way that it could be marketed. I'm not here to tell you that one, one way is right and the other is wrong. It's just that, as we talk about recreation, again, the part of this conversation is taking place because it is, you know, there, there are conversations about the feasibility of operating private golf courses. Again, I am not an expert on the matter, but I, I just want to voice that as we talk about, again, right now, it is just at a two and a half acre site. It does not have the, the recreational subcategory or primary category of the two and a half acre ultimate. Commissioner Spiz?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to put on my other hat here for a minute. The county board commissioners just approved some millage language that's going to be on the ballot here in November. To increase your parks and rec miserable from .35 to .65. About 75% increase. It's going to bring you $52 million a year into the county. The question is starting to come, how much is too much from a recreation standpoint? I understand what people want, but what are they willing to pay for? Because just because you have a piece of property that's recreational, it still has to be maintained, and you still have to take care of it. Right? So, and from, and the, the county currently has seven golf courses. Right? Almost none of them make money, unless you said, half of them make money. Half of them don't. But the county's not wanting to get rid of them because, as Commissioner Oates said, people want recreational. So we'll see in November what people want to pay for. Because, I mean, that's a significant increase. And while everybody's going to be paying their taxes, and I think one of the biggest complaints we see is taxing. Everybody talks a lot in these, in these surveys there until you get your tax bill twice a year. It's like, holy crap. My taxes just went up again. Yeah, we all like our property taxes, our property values to go up. But guess what? Your taxes go up along with them. And you add these new millages on top of it. And you continue to add this, and you continue to add that, which is one of the reasons we're driving people out of this county. Because things are too expensive. Right? So I hear recreation, I do, and I'm 100% in recreation. I hear what everybody else is saying, too. I'm, has always been one of the big promoters of, of less density in two and a half acre lots, five acre lots, is what I prefer. But I'm also trying to be realistic with this site. From a golf course perspective, what are we going to do with a lot of business? Are we just going to let it sit there and grow and just dilapidate it? Or are you going to want a developer to come in and do something that we can all work closely together, or get something that is beautiful as they come up 24? Do I, like I said, I don't agree with this map at all. But I think we need to be somewhat flexible in what we're thinking for the future. And this is a future land use map. We could change it again in five years, is the way I look at it. Right? But let's give somebody an opportunity to look at it. If we would just put it as 2.5, I would say nobody looks at it at this point. They're going to sit there and if the Hubbard's continued to operate, they do. If they don't, they don't. They'll make, they may make the decision to move on. For me, it's, it's, I mean, it's, you have to look at the whole picture, look at everything. And by putting it as this quote mixed use or whatever the terminology is, for me, it's no different than what we did for Levy. That's my opinion. It's there, we have the opportunity to look at it, it's flexible. And if we don't get a plan, if it comes to, we don't get a plan, or township doesn't get a plan in the lake, we don't do it. Go by hamstringing somebody to two and a half acre lots, to me, it's not the right direction.
So do we look to hash it out like we did with the levy and say, look at it for mixed use in three years, five years, whenever we have infrastructure?
You could. Commissioner Bailey had questions.
Go ahead.
Can you explain that, the subarea of, of how you designated some of those locations that, from the levy properties?
Yeah, so the, the process for that was kind of similar to what Commissioner Spiz was talking about, to where it's like, these are massive chunks of land, just throwing one or two designations really isn't going to, it's not going to provide the future guidance you're going to want when the development comes to the table, and you need to kind of decide, how are we going to approach this? You know, what is our end in this going to be? A subarea plan allows you to apply that designation, look at that geography specifically, and list out bullet points. It's not, it's not a scientific study with exact outcomes, but it is. In order to, you know, we are open to development in this area. You can, you can have things like, we don't want to see more than so many, you know, X amount of units on the site. We do want to see open space amenities. We require traffic improvements. We require, you know, water and sewer. However, you know, whatever that cost is to get it there, we require it. And then should a, a PUD come in, you've got your roadmap. You've got your roadmap to say, this is all the stuff that we wanted, where is it? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm talking a little more harshly than the way that conversation would go, but that's the essence of what the subarea plan would be.
And I think, and when I looked at the two and a half, I thought that was a little rich. But I, when I thought about it myself, and then went down to a suburb residential as one acre. One acre works for a lot of reasons. We have a lot of nice parcels of land out here that have been developed with well and septic on, that meet all the standards that are currently in place. So currently in place means if we went to a one acre parcel down density, then we have an opportunity with a PUD in the future again, like you said, for a future use map. But, but what I'm looking at from the two and a half going down to one gives us a little more opportunity to look at from a development point of view, as it currently sits, or what it could do in the future, as water and sewer may become available in the district. Because right now, they're not. So we could, we could go down to one acre as a future land use map and put this into developmental property, based on the standards of what come out of the county right now, for well and septic, and we have lakefront properties with pretty nice looking lots. And with the idea that a PUD could come forward if there's more capacity in the future for the districts to be there for them, water and sewer providing. That's why I'm willing to go down to one acre instead of two and a half. That was just my opinion, though. It's not, it's not the whole consensus of a PC. But I am for recreational property, too. I live right next door to it.
Sure. You all family who aren't.
Would the subarea give us more opportu, like, more, um, direction on what we truly want there? Because it is a very prominent spot, you know, like you talked about. And I, I don't necessarily know if taking it just down to one acre will solve our, solve that prominent spot problem. But would the subarea help us to say, all right, this might make it look better if other opportunities came to our, uh, came before us?
Yes, I mean, the subarea, again, it, it allows you to paint with, it allows you to paint in broad strokes. So you can say, again, that yes, you know, around, around natural water features, we would like a certain amount of amenities. And, you know, in, in certain areas, we would like this style or this density of housing, and in this area, we'd like this density of housing. Or we wanted to add a, a multi, you know, to phrase there, or to coin their phrase, a multi-generational, you know, element to the site, things of that nature. So yes, it, it's a way in which for you to get a little bit more specific without getting really specific. That comes at the time of development.
Helps us have a bit more control?
Yeah, because at that, that way, instead of, instead of it coming to you as a PUD regardless, whether it's two and a half acres, one acre, whatever, as it coming to you as a PUD regardless, at the time it comes to you as a PUD and you don't have anything in place, you're kind of starting from the, right from the beginning, and playing a little bit of catch up on, well, what do we want? What should we do? What, this allows you to say, okay, we did this in the master plan, we know what we want, we know what we expect, and roll it out. And it's not to say that that can't change, you know, times change. It could be years before you actually see something, but it, it gives you a little bit of a head start on the conversation as opposed to, to trying to play catch up when the development hits the door.
When do we, when do we put those very specific guidelines in place?
The subarea plan?
Yes.
So that's part of what we would be doing with this process. So if, if the board were to say that they wanted to take this in a subarea direction, then what we would do is get some of the initial bullet points from the things that you're looking for, reference some of the information that the owners have already given us, and kind of come back with one of those, you know, big picture kind of views like what we did with the other sites, which we would, those sites and the comments that were received on those at our last meeting, we will be looking to present to you guys in early October. So with this site, again, if we, if tonight it's determined that a subarea plan is the way that you might want to go with this, I'd get a few bullet points and some ideas, just to kind of start, just so we could start on a graphical representation. And then at the next meeting, we could hammer what those are out a little bit more. You're the one, I guess the one, yeah, it's, when it comes to, I guess something to consider when you're talking about designations and we're talking about densities, is that just because something is two and a half acres or one acre, or 25K lots, or so on and so forth, it's not to say that, that every square inch of that development under that designation doesn't have items like open space or recreation space. It doesn't stop the developer from offering those amenities regardless. And there are certain requirements in the zoning ordinance that do slate for things of that nature. And again, this is future land use, it's not zoning. So conversations about permitted by right don't apply here. But just to, it- But just to, it, just because you see all orange doesn't mean there can't be some green in it too, if you decide to kind of pursue a single designation for now. I know this is, I know, it's not easy. But like I said, in order to kind of take the next step, they do need guidance on what, what designation you would like to see. It could stay two-and-a-half, it can change to one acre, it can change the sub area plan. Just don't make one up on me tonight. That's the only thing it cannot be.
Yeah, just kind of go down the line and see what everyone thinks.
Left to right, you guys start sitting over there.
I, I, you guys always start with me. It's like, oh, man.
But I agree, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Go ahead. With, um, what Commissioner Oates said earlier, um, he has some really good points, which I agree with regarding the, uh, the surveys that have gone out, and even the, um, the 2019 master plan supports that. Uh, I do agree that at some point, some sort of residential development should be entertained for the property. Um, as Mr. Spitz says, we really need to leave that, I think, open and I will, I'm catching this properly with the size, density, et cetera. Um, what we see in this map right here, I just don't see how that works anytime soon with the water challenges. We really haven't even talked about the traffic that this would add to the area, you know, north-south roads, east-west, um, tremendous amount of traffic, and it's not even connected to 24 currently, right? There's no, it's what was just said earlier, there's no property ownership connecting to 24. There's no path right now for that to, that connection to be made, so that would take more time. And of course, the water challenge we talked about. So that summarizes my thoughts. Thank you.
I'm not afraid to start, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I feel like as a future land use draft that we're talking about, it's not, it's not in writing, it's not in stone, it's what we have for zoning. But a suburb residential area size of one acre is a good starting point, I think, for the future. I mean, if we have enough property there to work with on property that would be of that size, and if they came in with a PUD and created density within the property of something of nature near there, then we created a nice draft for the future for what we want. Right now, without the water and sewer district availability, that was well-known way before now, from what I understand, what I heard, and then I didn't know there wasn't, was something in the M24 for ingress and egress, so I just found out this evening. So I could, I could go down to a suburb residential, in my mind. Now, if the rest of the planning commission members want to stay higher, or stay strictly residential, or excuse me, recreational, then we need to get a poll and see what's in. So Mr. Dale, excuse me, that's a lot we could hope for that from us.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. We do have that poll. We have canvassed through surveys, through open houses, through the work with the steering committee in regards to the master plan. And the residents have spoken. The residents made it very clear. I'm not reacting to the plans that the builder has to put there. I'm reacting to the changes from recreation slash 2.5 acres to more critical mass, in the developer's own words, more critical mass and more density. And I don't feel that that corner of our township needs to be any more congested than what it is today until other things change within the township, such as our infrastructure for water and sewer, such as our traffic ins, uh, infrastructure, that I've already talked about, the density response from the community.
Mr. Chair, I do, I do want to be fair. I believe Ken, you had asked, I mean, it's up to you guys as well, Grant, but I didn't want to, he did ask if he could make another comment.
Yeah.
I promise to be very brief. I just want to reiterate that when Levy made his presentation, I think a month ago, I was at the meeting, and the, and the question came up, he was talking about a piece of property, I think it was 10, 20, 10, 15 years ahead, and the panel, and the commissioner said, well, why do we have to deal with that now? And what his response was, was because we need to make plans and invest time and money and effort in order to create plans and developments that would work. Well, there's a parallel here. We recognize that the water has to be addressed, and that's, it's gonna be a step process with Eagle, with the current, if the current location is no good, then the possibility of creating a well and pump on a, on a golf course property would then be presented, and the developer would be part of that process, and you'd look at trying to accomplish that. Sanitary doesn't seem to be a problem. The traffic issue with regard to access to 24, we believe that that's, that may be an easement that are a piece of property that's owned by the township, but yeah, we need to try and work to get an easement to cover the access. But the, the one point that I want to make is, if you go with the sub area plan, you create the opportunity on the development side for the developer to invest the time and the money to try and make those things get accomplished with the water, with the sanitary, with the access to the road, so they, they can then come before you and make a plan and a presentation that says, this is something that we'd like you to approve and that you would like. If you foreclose it, if, if we're back to one acre lots, the value of the property from the development standpoint is going to be such that they can't, they're not gonna want to spend the money to investigate, and they're not gonna, and they're not gonna have the development dollars to put into the infrastructure. I'm not suggesting that, and I recognize there's no need or reason for the commission to bind themselves to a course that they don't want. I'm not even suggesting that. I'm just, back to Commissioner Spitz's point, is if you do the sub area, if you do it as a sub area plan, you're leaving all the options open. The onus is still gonna be on the owner or the developer to accomplish and resolve all those issues to your satisfaction and present a development that when people drive up and they first see it, that it's appealing, and it, it has all the things that, that you want to see. So I would just, and, and the last point I, I want to make is, I think you should also kind of keep in mind the ownership of the property. This has been a family that's been in this community, I think, for 70 years, going back to their fathers, and they've operated the golf course, they've contributed to the community. The golf courses have an age and have a limit, and, you know, and there's a lot of golf courses in the area, and if they should, I believe it's fair that they should also be considered in having an opportunity to move this property into a development that you would like, and that's, and, and that would be satisfactory and, and, and viewed favorably by the commission. And that's really all that we're asking for, is we're asking, don't foreclose opportunities. Go with the sub area plan so that it's an open issue that they can go and do what they have to do to satisfy it. They need to get the water, they need to get the sanitary, they need to resolve the access to the road so that people are safe. And they need to present a plan that everyone looks at and says, this is gonna be the nicest development in the entire area. And that is accomplished, in my view, by the sub area plan, and I think it's foreclosed by leaving them at one acre or two-and-a-half acres. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Jim Sharp. Has that property been perked to know that a septic system will work for each individual home if they want to go there?
Not to my knowledge, no. So I don't believe that there's been any testing done on that property to, you know, for, for wells or for septics. Not to my knowledge, no.
So, I mean, I can't put words in commissioners' mouths. I don't know that we, I don't know that I walk away from this feeling like there's a consensus about which way the site should go.
Majority rules, so.
Huh?
Majority rules.
Well, right, so, I mean, we can, I, I think the way that this ends up is a straw vote, you know, where it's, it's kind of, it's not necessarily like official, but it is a way for me to walk away with the majority direction of the board on what we, what the plan is for the site. Um, I think, not to throw, not to answer questions with questions, I think it's, what are we voting on? Are we voting on it stays at two-and-a-half or it goes sub area? Are we voting on it stays two-and-a-half, it goes to one? That's, I don't want to try to like, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm happy to, to structure this so that we get the answer, you know, we get the direction that we need, but I think that's what it'll come down to.
We can go right to left, I guess, and just do a tally?
Right, but is, is, is the vote, keep it two-and-a-half or go sub area? Is that what we're asking commissioners to vote on? Because what I've heard is, I've heard keep it, I've heard go to one, I've heard go sub area. Um, and so, but I can't, but we, if I got two votes for sub area and I got eight votes for one and I got-
Yeah, you used three. You're gonna have to come to two and somebody's gonna have to say yea or nay.
Right, that's, that's where we're-
So it's either keep it or go sub area?
I think that that's, I mean, if, is that, is, does that? Yes, is that what the commission is going for?
I'm, I'm good to go what we just said for two areas, we'll say yea or nay on two area.
Alright, so, with that, um, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll-
Two options, please?
The, the option is to keep it at the two-and-a-half row, uh, residential designation.
This is only a draft future land use.
Correct. Correct. It's to keep it at the two-and-a-half, uh, and again, it's only two-and-a-half as designated now. There, there, there's not a recreational component to the designation right now. It's not to say two-and-a-half acre sites can't have that, just so you know. So it's either you're voting to keep it at two-and-a-half or you're voting to go sub area plan with it. So in the effort of-
I'm your first?
Yeah, go for it. I, I need a volunteer bad.
I'll go first. I'll say sub area.
Two-and-a-half.
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 Sub area.
Two-and-a-half.
You know, I just wanted to make a note, this feels like a vote, like, this is something that should be on the agenda and itemized and detailed out so we have more time to prepare for it. A very specific item, and I know this is just, not just, but this is a future land use that can be changed, right?
Correct.
It just doesn't feel that way. It's like this is lock, gonna be locked in somehow, and I want to be careful that there's, through plan review and everything else, that we're not locking ourselves into a certain requirement.
I mean, it's, we are still talking about a draft. It still has to go through all of the approval processes. It has to go to the board. We are looking to wrap up future land use, though. Um, it was not the intent to come this evening with a vote, but I needed to kind of see what the commissioners were feeling, what their comments were.
I realize that, and I-
But I have to walk away tonight with a direction for the site, because we need to keep working. We need to, we either need to say it's two-and-a-half and we're moving, or it's a sub area plan, these are the things we want, and we bring that back to it, and we, and we can keep going from there.
So, you know, when I look at the agenda and I read through the packet, sub area's not indicated on there, right? It talks about one acre, 2.5.
It's, you mean on this right here?
Well, on, on our, the, the packet that we were given for tonight, right?
Correct.
Was sub area outlined in there somewhere? Maybe I missed it, but-
It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily presented as an option, but it's-
That, that's my point, right? It wasn't an option. It wasn't something that I studied or tried to do research on. And I just wanted to be very careful in, you know, voicing where this goes because of all the things we've talked about.
You can abstain then.
Yeah, I would, I would abstain. I'd need more information. I don't feel it's appropriate to have this on, as, as, say, a vote for that reason.
So you have your-
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, so with that, the majority is that the site stays at two-and-a-half. Alright, well, I appreciate your time, uh, and I appreciate the information.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Can you explain to the board and to the public what that means? In other words, two-and-a-half acres for site, uh, on the future land use map, explain the future land use map and how that's integrated into the master plan?
So the, it's future land use map as a guide for future land uses, you know, the direction in which the township, the community, uh, sees certain areas of the township going as it relates to development or parks or traffic, all of that, all of those kind of things are taken into consideration. Where, where it gets applied is part and part when you start to do a zoning rewrite, when you start to update your zoning to kind of see, well, what direction is the, is the township heading and how do we need to adjust our zoning accordingly? Um, it is referenced when a rezoning request comes to the planning commission and the township board, um, as it relates to the type of development that could go there. Um, but it is, it is just a general guide in the direction of, of what the community sees happening, you know, on those sites or in those areas. So then, there's no other questions or comments? I believe agenda-wise, that, uh, that covers us.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number 11, new business. See anything on the agenda? We'll go to number 12, communication and community, committee reports. The Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Chair, I believe they've met, I don't think they've had any enforcement, but you know what I mean.
Okay, um, ordinance review committee?
The ordinance review committee met today. We, uh, worked a, a couple of different agenda items that will come to you in the next meeting. We also started a couple other ordinances that need some tune-up, and we started putting together a list of future projects for the ORC to work on.
Thank you very much. Planner and engineer reports?
Come on, Becca? So, I don't get my steps back and forth. Planning wise, uh, next, in two weeks, uh, we will likely have a site plan for your review and industrial site plan. Um, we, they had a few items that need to be kind of further fleshed out, so they quick turned around and gave us a revised review, so we are working on that. Um, and at that meeting as well, I believe, uh, the ORC will have some language in front of you guys to consider recommendation up to the township board. Other than that, business as usual at the hall.
Thank you.
New packet? We should have, uh, update on both private development projects that are ongoing in the community and municipal projects that are ongoing, so if there's any questions, I would, we have to answer those.
Who's gonna interrupt the grease? Thank you.
Sure was.
For what?
Oh, that was sarcasm?
And then, um, item number two, um, I think the, the gentleman had left, he was talking about, um, traffic going through Tanview. Just so that you're aware, the township has been told by the road commission that Sanders Road, between Seymour Lake and Drainer Road, will be paved in 2024, 2029, 2029. Excuse me? There's only so many roads that are eligible for it, for gravel road paving. Done, so, again, that-
Done, so, again, not perfect, you know, I mean, it doesn't help the Tanview, because people would have to jog, but it is scheduled right now for 2029. Excuse me?
There's a difference between Seymour and Draino.
It doesn't go any further.
I know. That's why I said by there.
Yeah, I would think Oak Road should go all the way down to the counterbalance. Okay, with nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So vote.
All in favor?
Alright.
You're adjourned.